All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 25th, 2024 council meeting. If you would all rise now for Councilmember Gwen Brill to lead us in a prayer and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the opportunity to serve the city of Fairfield. We ask for your guidance in the decisions we make tonight, that they will always be in the best interest of Fairfield residents and our business community. We give thanks for our military personnel, firefighters, and police officers that protect the freedoms and liberties that we cherish. In Jesus's holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Councilmember Brill. All right, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brill?
Here.
Councilmember Bessel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
All right, thank you. Are there any agenda modifications for tonight's meeting? Hearing done, we'll have it stand as stated? All right, is there an executive session request?
No requests tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Out early, sweet. All right, that's good. Special presentations, we do have a group of students here tonight from a local Fairfield Prevention Coalition, and I'd like for all of you guys to come up here in the front, and we're gonna do a little presentation, how's that? So I'm gonna read a proclamation, and then I'm gonna give them the opportunity to talk a little bit, each one of them, about what they're doing in the community and this organization, how's that? Okay? I'll read this. From the office of the mayor, proclamation. Whereas adults who provide alcohol to those below the legal drinking age of 21 are placing those youths at risk for health, safety, and legal problems. And whereas alcohol may use, I'm sorry, alcohol used by young people is dangerous, not only because of its risks associated with acute impairment, but also because of the threat to their long-term development and well-being. And whereas it is illegal to give or allow your teen friends to drink alcohol in your home, even with their parents' permission. And whereas anyone found guilty of providing alcohol to youth could face up to a thousand-dollar fine and six months in jail, in addition to pay any civil action that can be brought as a result of damages or injury related to the offense. Whereas the city of Fairfield, in partnership with the Fairfield Prevention Coalition, encourages residents to refuse to provide alcohol beverages to underage youth and to take necessary steps to discourage illegal, unhealthy practice, including the reporting of underage drinking by calling the local police. Now therefore, I, Mitch Rotis, the mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, I'm sorry, April 20th, I'm sorry, April 20th to May 25th, 2024, safe prom and graduation day in the city of Fairfield. I encourage residents not only discourage the use of alcohol by those below the age of consumption, but also urge all residents of this Fairfield to refuse to provide alcoholic beverages to those underage youth and to continue taking the necessary steps to discourage this illegal and unhealthy activity. So I'm gonna give this to the group, and I'm gonna give the microphone to her first, there you go, Caitlin.
Mr. Mayor, you don't mind if I interrupt and take the microphone for a second, do you? Very good, okay. Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, thanks for having us here, as usual, this is our annual event with our proclamation. I'm Joe Marquess, I'm the Executive Director of the Fairfield Youth Coalition. We have 55 students in our senior high school, 35 students in our freshman school, and 110 students in our middle school coalitions. We have 160 students that are out trying to change our school communities for the better. These folks here are officers and folks who really are positive change agents for our youth coalition. We're focusing today on our safe prom campaign. We know based on research and past experiences, when prom season comes around, everything that we have taught them, or they have taught us about safety, making good decisions around drugs and alcohol, kinda gets tested a little bit around that season of prom and graduation. So we know that without the community's support, that we cannot be successful in our efforts. Research very clearly indicates that they can do everything they want in the school and talk to their friends and their school communities, but if the community doesn't support, you know, not supporting underage drinking and drug use and vaping and tobacco product use for young people, without that community's support, that social norm, we are not gonna be successful, and that's why we're here. Mayor Rotis, thank you so much for allowing us to do this every year. Students wanna share just a couple bits of the things that they're working on, special projects for the spring, and we won't take up too much of your time. Okay, first will be our president of our youth coalition, Caitlin White.
Thank you, Joe. So I was tasked with speaking on some of our safe prom campaigns. So, safe prom is perhaps one of the largest campaigns we do all year. One of the things we've done this year is we have partnered with Fairfield Chamber Businesses, and we have worked to promote our tagline, "Safe Prom Begins With You." And being able to collaborate with these businesses has definitely promoted a sense of unity, and I would say it has increased throughout the community, just this message of, hey, we don't want our students misusing these substances. Another thing that we have been continuing to implement is we've partnered with our Fairfield Township and city police departments, and we've had letters sent out, I just received mine like this past weekend, encouraging parents and guardians to encourage behaviors and keep students from using substances around prom and grad season.
Hi, my name is Jane Chai, I'm a sophomore at Fairfield Senior High School, and another campaign that we're working on is our Letters on Lockers campaign. It is a heartwarming endeavor where elementary students write letters placed on high school lockers, reminding older peers to stay safe, be drug-free, and avoid drinking and driving. These simple yet powerful messages serve as a constant reminders of the importance of responsible decision-making. Additionally, our student tip sheets provide valuable insights and practical advice on drug abuse awareness, notably focusing on the dangers of prom, of drug misuse. And these tips crafted by fellow students equip our youth with the knowledge and necessary tools to make informed choices and prioritize their well-being. And as part of our Plant the Promise campaign, we plant tools at the high school and freshman building, symbolizing a commitment to safe and drug-free proms. These vibrant blooms serve as a visual representation of our collective dedication to fostering a healthy environment for our youth. Furthermore, initiatives like flags, school signage, and posters are instrumental in spreading awareness of the dangers of drug abuse throughout our community. We want to develop a culture of strength and awareness against drug abuse and misuse through effective messaging and clever placement. In conclusion, we urge your support in raising our efforts to raise and create a safer, healthier environment for our youth. Together, let's continue to work towards a brighter future for Fairfield. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm gonna use this index card, 'cause no one wants to be here till 8 o'clock, and I'll talk, I'll talk to the end of the meeting. So the next thing that we do is our positive messaging campaign, and our positive messaging campaign is essentially our protective factor for youth in the community. And so, we wanna encourage them to realize that there is a lot of benefit in the community and to be a part of this change-making experience. And most people in our community are not using drugs, they are not using substances, and most parents in our community agree the same. So, we do a lot of different things in terms of conveying that message to youth, which is positive messaging, and it connects back to some of our key areas, like anxiety, depression, and enhancing connectedness, and we get that data from our pride survey. So our pride survey is given out to all Butler County schools, and we can compare that data specific to Fairfield, but also specific to our county and other counties to see what's going well. And as a coalition, we're really data-driven, so we'll identify our priority areas and target some of our campaigns and things like that to those priority areas, which is why we've came up with positive messaging. In our positive messaging, we do our tickets on car windshields, and I know that we've had a little bit of that trouble with that, but our main priority there is we wanna communicate the data, and believe it or not, most youth are invested in seeing that data and seeing how it compares to other schools, how it compares to our school, because it really helps them be a part of this bigger picture. And really, it is a bigger picture, that most youth are not using drugs, and that's exactly the message that we wanna drill down. Next thing is, is we wanna meet youth where they are, we know that there is a lot of ads on social media, there's a lot of things that we see on the news that may not be accurate descriptions of what is exactly going on in our communities, so we try to be vigilant on social media, telling the stories, working with our school district to promote all the good that's happening inside of our schools, again, to really exemplify the amazing things that youth in our coalition but across our community are doing every day to make it a safer place to live, work, and raise a family. Gladys, I'll let you finish that off.
It's always, it's always it, but it's Devon, so we're all good. Following that, we have our You Make a Difference campaign, and basically, from that campaign, we wanna perpetuate the narrative that those protective factors protect students like me and along with my other classmates. One of them is the assembly held at the freshman school building, where students would nominate teachers or custodians or staff in the building, just kind of giving them a thank you for their difference that they've impacted into their lives. I had the privilege of attending one of those assemblies, and I can definitely say that I wish I had that opportunity, because I know there were some teachers in my life that basically altered my high school career. Another one of our initiatives is our Be Drug-Free pins. Councilmembers, if you look beside your desk, you should have one of these pins, and not just pins, stickers. I have one on the back of my phone, and basically, these are just, you know, another factors that we send out to staff and students, just to kind of promote that brand, that image of, hey, big be drug-free around prom and grad season. You know, because at the end of the day, all we're trying to do is, you know, follow the data, and the data tells us that if you have enough protective factors around you, you're less likely to fall into all of these different and bad behaviors, like marijuana and drinking and all those things.
Hi, I'm Bella Gorchek, I'm a senior at the Fairfield High School. So, two things that I wanna talk about are the Fairfield Coalition Sticker Shock. So the Sticker Shock is an event we do each year in the Prevention Coalition. First, we obtain the permission of local retail alcohol sellers in our Fairfield community. Then we go along with Fairfield Coalition leaders and place the stickers on products throughout local stores. Our stickers act as warning labels or a shock to inform our community of the consequences they can face if they sell alcohol to minors. Our message comes out loud and clear when we, the students of Fairfield High School, are the ones spreading the word and taking action. Underage drinking is very serious and harmful, so that's why we go and place the stickers on the alcohol. The next thing I wanna talk about are the parents who host lose the most. Lastly, with the upcoming graduation and prom and other celebrations, it is all of our responsibility as citizens of Fairfield to promote safety and healthy choices. So we're trying to rally together as a community and finish this year safe and healthy. We're trying to ask all the adults in our community to not provide alcohol to underage minors. Prom and graduation, that's a very special time in our lives to celebrate, and we need the help of all of the parents in our community to not promote giving their children alcohol. We at the Fairfield Prevention Coalition want to reduce the amount of parents who provide alcohol for teenagers. It begins with you, by not hosting and providing alcohol to minors, you will reduce the likelihood that teenagers will drink alcohol and suffer the effects later in life. We will also help each one of us have the best prom and graduation possible. So please keep, please help keep our students at Fairfield High School and in our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for what you're doing at the school and the community, and I hope enough people on TV land out here, and the little lapel pins and all the other social medias that you guys use gets the point across. So thank you again for what you're doing. Thank you, bless you guys, I tell ya, this is awesome. This is great. Did we get a quick picture with, oh, there she is.
We have a professional photographer on our staff. That's actually Bella Gorchek.
Oh, is that right? Okay. All right, do we have any citizen comments? And you're free to come up, you have five minutes to say whatever you'd like to say. And, all right. I would like to recognize State Representative Jennifer Gross is in the office, or in the office, in the audience. So she visits here quite regularly on our meetings, and is a major adversary for us at the state level.
Can I have a second of your time? I won't even take five minutes, I know everybody wants to go and watch March Madness, right? Just a couple of quick things I'm really excited about. First of all, as a few of you may know, Career Fest is coming up, that is something we do in collaboration with the city and the Ohio Means Jobs. I just wanted to share that we have 47 companies signed up so far this year, and last year, I think we topped out at 50, and those were some last-minute things, so we are very excited about where we are for this year. A great group, and of those, 16 of those are manufacturing of the 47, so that's a great number to represent there.
What's the date?
April 18th.
April 18th, and that's at Fairfield High School Arena?
That is at Fairfield High School, yes, we have all the juniors and seniors come through and learn about careers that are available to them, even if they don't go on a college track. Then we also have some folks there from like the Fairfield Community Foundation and different places where they can get scholarships, a few schools, different things, so very excited about all that's happening with that. And then the other thing is, coming up, and you'll see more about this, I can't give you my flyer because it's still in draft form, but another cooperative thing that we do collaboratively with the city is our Quarterly Business Roundtable. We are, we have our next one coming up on Thursday, April 25th, that's 8:30 in the morning, when we hold those at the Community Arts Center. And this is such a great topic, it's gonna be about immigration and the impact on Butler County, what we see in Butler County workforce development, specific to workforce. So our speaker's gonna be Brian Wright, he's the Executive Director of Cincinnati Compass, so he will bring all the facts and figures and share with folks and have a time of discussion about how immigration is impacting workforce in Butler County. So those are my two things. Thank you very much for your time.
All righty. Anybody else citizen comment time? All right, Mr. Paulus has a presentation. Councilmember?
Chief Lakeham, do you wanna step up? I'm proud to announce the City of Fairfield Fire Department has been recognized by the Board of Directors of the city's Property and Casualty Insurance Carrier Miami Valley Risk Management Association for its successful control of losses in the calendar year of 2022. This prestigious award is given every year by the MV RMA Board to member city departments that achieve the standard of excellence in risk management during the prior loss year. The City of Fairfield Fire Department was one of only six city fire departments that received the award. Congratulations to the Fairfield Fire Department and its employees for instituting best practices and for their commitment to risk management.
All righty, thank you, Councilmember Paulus, for bringing that to our attention and doing that. There's no public hearing tonight, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Hearing any objections, we'll let the minutes approved. Oh, council reports, I'm sorry, skipped right over you, didn't I?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to recognize our Finance Department for an award that they've received. So, last week, the City of Fairfield was notified that we received the GFoa, that's Government Finance Officers Association Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2022. With this, Fairfield completes the sweep of the GFoa Awards for 2022 and receives the GFoa Triple Crown. So anything triple crowned's gotta be great. This distinction is reserved for those who receive the award for the annual comprehensive financial report, popular financial report, and budget presentation. We are added to a list of fewer than 350 entities each year across the entire United States and Canada to be recognized for this level of excellence in financial reporting. This achievement is a result of the efforts of our current city manager, Scott Timmer. Prior to Scott's tenure as Finance Director, Fairfield did not submit for either the PAFR or Budget Award. Striving to achieve the highest recognition for exceptional financial reporting, he submitted for and received the first of five consecutive PAFR Awards for Fiscal Year 2018 and in 2022, the first of two Budget Awards. In addition to Scott, a special thanks and recognition are due to Diana Davenport and Jessica Skirvin for their efforts in the preparation of each of these reports, and to all the Finance Department staff for their dedication throughout the year. We appreciate Scott for his raising of the bar and the expectation that the city of Fairfield be recognized each year as a GFoa Triple Crown recipient. Thank you, Mr. Timmer, thank you to our finance staff.
You know, I wanna, I wanna comment on that, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's, it's easy to get information about the lack of government, I'm gonna say, expertise in finances and the trouble that you get into and so forth, and this is truly a sign that this city is in control from a governance standpoint of its finances, its processes are in control, and most importantly, that reflects on the integrity of the city and the staff and what you've done and your team has done to keep us fiscally solvent and thriving. So congratulations, and it's wonderful news to see, 'cause I know this has been building for a while, so thank you.
You got council reports down here? Council reports down here? You got one, okay.
So the next edition of the Fairfield Flyer will be released on the city website tomorrow, and it's coming to your mailbox next week. This is a real high-quality document. The city's Junior Police Academy is scheduled for June 10th through the 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, registration information is also on the city's website. 2024 Safety Town is returning for kids with two sessions in June, and the registration, again, for Safety Town is on the website. The Public Works Brush and Limb Program resumes in April and runs through October. Three pickup areas are the same as those in the Leaf Pickup. And then the Fairfield Fire Department will be hosting a community blood drive, May 13th at the fire station, May 15th at the farmer's market, and there's going to be a QR code in the Fairfield Flyer, more information in the register. And then the Mobile Mammogram Unit will be at CAC on June 5th, from 8:30 to 10:30, and again, see the flyer, the flyer is important, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Run down through here?
Me, always me, I always have something.
That's good.
It's our Terry.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, don't, don't even. Okay, Fairfield Parks will be placing five large wooden Easter eggs at five of our 29 parks. Your job is to search for these eggs, take a photo, buy all five eggs, and email the photos to the city of Fairfield, and a small prize will be given to the first 50 winners. Also, Total Eclipse in the Park will be held on April 8th from 1:30 to 3:08. We'll have a science lesson, storytime, crafting giveaways, we'll also have limited amounts of glasses to hand out. And the North Trace Golf Course opens starting April 1st, so be sure to come out and enjoy our nine-hole executive course. That's all I have.
Thank you. My league started last Thursday, and I golfed very well, for me. We'll just leave it at that, and so it was a lot of fun, the course is in great shape, absolutely great shape, so. All right, through that, council reports, and there's no public hearing tonight. Any additions or deletions to the minutes, we'll let it stand as approved. There's a special meeting announcement, Madam Clerk, is that March 9? Okay, moving on to old business, Councilmember Davidson.
I have an ordinance to repeal existing chapters 1101 through 1199, subdivision regulations and zoning code of ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, and adopt the new City of Fairfield Planning and Zoning Code as part of ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinance of Fairfield, Ohio. That's the third reading, I make a motion to amend, I guess there were some formatting and grammatical errors in the initial drafting of it, so first we'll make a motion to amend just those formatting errors.
Motion second for the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Now move to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from council, comments from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Next, we have an ordinance amending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, section 1141.02, the City of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map. The second reading, so we're gonna move to suspend the third reading.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from council, comments from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Next, we have an ordinance amending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, section 1141.02, City of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map. Again, move to suspend the third reading.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from council, comments from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Public Works, Councilmember Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution continuing a general policy of the city of Fairfield, Ohio regarding property erosion along streams, creeks, rivers, and other watercourses. This is the third reading, I'd like to make a motion for adoption, please.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, as we move to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title only.
Second.
Motion second, read by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right, moving to Development Services, Mr. Timmer.
We have one resolution and one ordinance tonight for Development Services. The resolution is to amend Resolution 9-23 and extend the moratorium related to vape stores. The ordinance is to amend the codified ordinances of Fairfield relating to a planned unit development at 6131 and 6151 River Road. The applicant, Optimize Senior Living, is proposing to operate an assisted living facility for senior citizens at the former One Way Farm property. The entire 12-acre property consists of five parcels, three in the city, two in Fairfield Township. Thank you.
All righty, I'm sorry, Councilmember Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution number 9-23 to extend the moratorium on the consideration and/or granting of any zoning occupancy, building, or other permits or applications relating to vape stores within the city of Fairfield and declaring it emergency. Move to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Yeah, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from council, comments from audience, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Next, I have an ordinance amending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, section 1141.02, the City of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map by approving the concept and final development plan for the optimized senior living planned unit development on approximately 5.6 acres of land on three parcs. on three parcels located at six-one-three-one and six-one-five-one River Road. Um, that's the first reading, and we will set for a public hearing on April eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
So the, uh, the public hearing will be April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. I know there's resident, or owners, or proposed owners in the audience, the Prominent Family in Fairfield, uh, the Riker family is, uh, opposing this. So we look forward to hearing from you guys on, uh, being here on April eighth, and that'll be a, uh, the next joint public hearing, so. All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Public Safety, Councilmember Tim, or I'm sorry, City Manager Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for public safety. The ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant with the Federal Emergency Management Association. If awarded, FEMA would be funding one-hundred percent of the salaries of the new firefighters for thirty-six months. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Paulus.
Yes, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safe for Grant application in agreement with FEMA for funding nine new firefighters and declaring it an emergency. Make a motion to suspend, uh, second and third reading.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Motion for adoption. Motion for adoption. Uh, comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. All right, thank you, um, Mr. Timmer, for Public Works.
We have five ordinances tonight for Public Works. The first ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Oberson's Nursery and Landscapes for the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six street sweeping services. Public Works advertised this project for bid. Three bids were received. City staff reviewed and recommends Oberson's Nursery and Landscapes as the lowest and best. The second ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Capital Electric Line Builders for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-six traffic signal maintenance. Public Works advertised this project for bid. One bid was received. City staff reviewed and recommends Capital Electric as the most qualified bidder. The third ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions for HVAC equipment at the Fairfield Justice Center. This project will utilize contracts held with the Ohio Purchasing Council, TOPC, of which the City of Fairfield is a member thereof, utilizing ORC Title One, Chapter one-sixty-seven. The fourth ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering for the Ross and Woodbridge Intersection Improvement Design Phase. Choice one, Choice One was initially selected to do a safety study and alternative analysis where crash history and signal analysis were performed. This study was completed in the fall of twenty-twenty-three. Public Works staff considered other consultant qualifications and determined that it was in the best interest of the city to recommend Choice One Engineering. The fifth and final ordinance authorizes the city manager to execute and file a Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. The City of Fairfield is actively pursuing a Safe Streets for All Planning and Demonstration Grant in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Timmer. And Councilmember Kraft.
Ditto what Mr. Timmer said.
All in favor?
Thank you. Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Oberson's Nursery and Landscapes LLC for the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six street sweeping services. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And a motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Next, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Capital Electric Line Builders LLC for the twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-six traffic signal maintenance and declaring an emergency. A motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And a motion for adoption.
Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
All right, next, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions LLC for the replacement of the HVAC equipment at the Justice Center and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second. There you go. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And a motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from council?
Just one, um, I don't know who's leading. Is this Adam? Is this you, or? Ben, I, I would assume this is the best high efficiency and so forth, right, equipment?
Yes, so Brian Rose is, uh, an expert in this field, and he's, um, recommend, he's worked with Prodigy for a while, and they have engineers on staff as well, so to identify the best, the best fit. He, um, this will be an upgrade from what we have now, which wasn't, has not been a great fit.
Do we know if we get a cost savings from, from this, from the standpoint of just general use or not?
I couldn't really answer that. I, I can have Brian follow.
Yeah, just have him give me a call. Thanks.
It'll be a lot more efficient, that's for sure.
Actually, that, yeah, that's right. It is, it is much more efficient. I think he'd said it went from, I forget the numbers, ninety-two to ninety-six percent, something like that.
All righty. Um, all, uh, is she all in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Next, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Choice One Engineering for Ross Road and Woodbridge Boulevard Intersection Improvement Design. A motion for suspending second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And a motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And finally, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute and file the Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan Grant Application and in agreement and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And a motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Finance and Budget, Mr. Timmer.
We have five ordinances tonight for finance and budget. The first and second ordinances are to establish salaries, hourly rates, and numbers of certain employees. Specifically, these ordinances address municipal court, members of the IFF, AFSMI, and FOP, and an increase of the Ohio minimum wage. The third ordinance is for supplemental appropriations to finance the capital improvement program passed at the March eleventh meeting of City Council. The fourth and fifth ordinances are for contractual and non-contractual appropriations. The contractual appropriations total nine-hundred-and-eighteen thousand and are for two projects in the Public Works Department. The non-contractual appropriations total one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and include four projects from the public utilities and public works departments. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Councilmember Brill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain municipal court employees of the City of Fairfield, Ohio, and to authorize and limit the numbers and types of certain municipal court employees to repeal ordinance number one-seven-eight dash twenty-three and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Second is an ordinance to establish salary, salaries and hourly rates for certain salaried and hourly employees of the City of Fairfield, Ohio, and to authorize and limit the numbers and types of certain employees to repeal ordinance number one-seven-seven dash two-three and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Third is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash two-three entitled "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio During a Period Beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four and Ending December thirty-fourth, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four." These are supplemental appropriations. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third reading.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Fourth is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash two-three entitled "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio During a Period Beginning January first, two thousand twenty-four and Ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four." And these are contractual appropriations. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Nope, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, didn't I? Motion second, I'm sorry, all in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. All in favor, uh, comments from council? Comments from audience? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
And finally, I have an ordinance to amend ordinance number one-six-six dash two-three entitled "An Ordinance to Make Estimated Appropriations for the Expenses and Other Expenditures of the City of Fairfield, Ohio During a Period Beginning January one, two thousand twenty-four and Ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four." These are the four non-contractual appropriations. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor? Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Mandy just came. In, in the, in the newsletter that's coming out, are the concerts in the park going to be listed in that? Are we ready to announce that? When's the first one? When's it kickoff?
It will be in the flyer.
It will. It, it's in the flyer?
Yeah, we got the, uh, draft of that today. I, I know I got a copy sitting on my desk. I believe it's May thirtieth is the first concert.
All right. Can't wait to.
Taylor Swift cover band, if you're excited.
Taylor Swift is coming to Fairfield. That's what I just heard.
A Taylor Swift, not the.
Did you get that, Mike and Sue? Taylor Swift?
Steve's going to need a little big, bigger budget. He's out of town that time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you read the meeting schedule?
Monday, April eighth, Council Manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM. Monday, April twenty-second, Council Manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM. Monday, May thirteenth, Council Manager briefing, six PM, regular meeting, seven PM.
All right, no executive session. We are now adjourned. Thank you.